I'll order the Planning Commission meeting for May 15th, 2012. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, good evening, everyone. Is -- Joan's not going to be here tonight for this, Richard?
That's right.
Okay. Kate, could we have roll call, please?
Kate. Kidd? Bryson?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Knudsen? Shannon?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Fuerborn?
Here. Okay. And so I have a little thing I'm supposed to read here under Agenda Changes or Revisions. And before the Planning Commission begins our meeting tonight, I would like to make the public and viewers aware of another meeting at this evening. The first public meeting for the VRD Consensus Project is being held this evening from 5:30 to 8:30 in the Auditorium at Lincoln City Cultural Center at 5:40 Northeast Highway 101. Public meetings are also scheduled for evenings in June, July, and August. Public comment will be taken at each of these meetings. More information on the VRD Consensus Project can be found on the city's website at www.lincolncity.org. There is a link to the Consensus Project on the homepage of the city website. This page will explain how you can be involved in the project and also includes the dates and times for future meetings. All comments are welcome and appreciated. So this will be an ongoing project for several months and are the meetings all going to be at the Cultural Center?
I believe that's right.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, this is the only night when it conflicts with Planning Commission. So the June, July, and August dates are also on Tuesdays, but they are not on Planning Commission nights.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, are there any additional agenda changes or revisions?
The only thing is it's likely there will be a final order to be adopted after tonight's hearing.
Okay. And the script that you gave me just needs to be read at that time, correct? Okay. Commissioners, you've been distributed copies of the meeting minutes for May 15th, 2012. Are there any changes or revisions? If not, could we have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, public comments on non-agenda items and Agenda Items 6, 7, and 8. Are you folks here for a meeting or did you wish to speak at this time? For the meeting? Okay. Final orders and resolutions and written communications, and we don't have any at this time. We may a little later in the meeting. And next, we have public hearings. And it is Taft Elementary School, Conditional Use Permit 2012-1, Request for Improvements to an Elementary School, Removal of Four Portable Classrooms, 9,781 square foot addition to the north end of the building, including six classrooms and both staff and student restrooms. Exterior improvements will include installation of sidewalks linking up to the sidewalk on the west side of High School Drive. The proposed development is located at 4040 Southeast High School Drive, Assessors Map 07-11-27, Tax Lot 100. The project site is located in the single-family residence, R175 Zone. The applicant property owner is Lincoln County School District, Representative Don Pavitt, Pavitt Land Use and LLC as agent. Now I need to read this script, right, Kate? Are there any objections to the Commissioner's jurisdiction? Planning Commissioners, are there any abstentions, disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex parte communications? Okay. Staff will now read the substantive criteria that apply to this hearing.
The criteria are 1716, Single Family Residential, 1752, Supplementary Regulations, 1756, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, and 1760, Conditional Uses.
Okay. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed to the applicable substantive criteria as described or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Any person may raise an issue either by testifying in person or by delivering a letter to the Planning Commission no later than the close of the evidentiary record of hearing. Failure within that time to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to give the Planning Commission an opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In addition, failure by the applicant within that time to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issues will preclude an action for damages based on those issues in the Circuit Court. Finally, prior to the close of the evidentiary record of this hearing, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. If the participant requests such an opportunity prior to the close of the evidentiary record, then the Planning Commission will either continue the hearing for at least seven days or leave the record open for at least seven days to allow the submission of additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the city council. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance of the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any Planning Commissioner questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any of these questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Speak clearly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and mailing address. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
And before you start, Mr. Chair, I just want to say, Richard, I know Joan's not here, and I don't perceive this as a conflict, but I'm sitting here thinking about it after the fact. I have two children that attend Taft Elementary School, so I don't know if that's...
It's not a conflict.
Okay. Like I said, I don't perceive this one, but I wanted to put that out there on the record anyway, so.
Okay, thank you. Deborah?
Okay, thank you. I believe you've already given the project description. Again, I'll just repeat that it's to remove the four portable classrooms at Taft Elementary School and build an addition for six classrooms and two restroom facilities. I am showing an overhead right now of the, an aerial photo of the Taft campus. And to the north is, well, here is the elementary school that exists today and the portables at the north end. To the north of this lot is the high school lot. To the east is the Bayview Development. It's for residential use. There are several houses in there at this point. To the south, existing residential. And I just want to point out that the lot for the elementary school also crosses High School Drive and includes what we've been calling the pit, which is the new area for the Ball Diamond. So it's a very large lot, includes a lot more than just the site for the school. And beyond the pit is the commercial strip along Highway 101. Zoning for this area is all residential 1-7.5, and that includes the school as a conditional use, and that's why we're here this evening. Here's an up-close aerial. Again, you can see the portable classrooms at the north end that have been there for many years. And I did include a Google Earth shot showing the portables from High School Drive. I will mention also that High School Drive in this area has never been dedicated to the city, so it doesn't show up as public right-of-way because it is not. And we have asked the school district to take a look at that and see if they could actually dedicate the street. The city is taking care of it as a public street now. But that's why the lot looks so big and includes both sides of the street. Okay, this is a diagram showing the classrooms. I know you can't read the writing here, but this is the addition and the existing school to the south. This is even more complicated. This is the revised site plan. We reviewed the site plan, let's see, I think it was two weeks ago, and we generated a list of conditions that are also the recommended conditions for the conditional use permit, and it's included in your packet. Here, if you look closely, you can see the proposed classrooms and also the bathroom area. And under that, you can see the portables to be removed, so I won't belabor this. I also included an aerial that one of our engineers drew on to show where the new sidewalk would be, which is an exterior improvement, because I didn't know that you'd be able to see it on the site plan. It is there on the site, and also there's a gap here that's included. I will just run through the, I might note in the background section of the report that it listed, many things that the Planning Commission can consider in approving or modifying a conditional use permit. There is a long list of conditions that the commission can add if they feel it's necessary to make the conditional use compatible within the neighborhood. In this case, the school's been here for many decades, and so probably most of this is not necessary for you to consider. I will go through briefly the requirements that pertain to this use in the R175 Zone. And first of all, maximum building height is 35 feet. The proposed height of this building is approximately 29 feet. Yard setback for all uses is five feet for a one-story and seven and a half feet for more than one-story building. In this case, the, I'll go back here a little bit, the setbacks are fine except to the north where it does cross a property line right here at this tip. Fortunately, the property to the north is also owned by the school district, and so we are recommending a restrictive lot-line covenant that will correct that problem. That's what we do in those cases where the same property owner is utilizing two adjacent lots. So that will be submitted at the time of building permit, and it's a very straightforward administrative task. So then, let's see, going on, building coverage, we have, and I'll back up again here to show you that there is a lot of area involved in these two lots, and so the building occupies a very small amount. Because they are removing the portables, the net area of building increase is only about 5,000 square feet. Especially when we add the high school lot to the elementary school and the Ball Diamond lot, we have a very small area of actual coverage for building. The plans do not indicate any new signs, but if there are any, they'll have to go through our regular sign permit process and approval. The landscape plan requirements do not apply here because the addition does not exceed 50% of the existing value of improvements. For lighting, I made the statement here that any new lighting would have to be approved by the planning director, but actually in the conditions the applicant mentioned that they probably will want to have light at the north entrance, and so as long as it meets our requirements, I've got it in the final order as being acceptable. Only two trees are going to be removed as part of this project, and they are right in this vicinity. There is a path that extends from the school. It's an evacuation route as well as a footpath. The tree roots are buckling up the asphalt, and so they would like to remove the trees. It really is not directly connected with the project. Because they're nuisance trees, the planning director has okayed the removal without a permit, which is allowed in our tree ordinance for nuisance and dangerous trees. So what else can I tell you? The number of spaces required for parking is based on the number of classrooms and the number of administrative personnel at the school. As you saw in the report, 24 classrooms and 16 classified and administrative staff equal 40. Even after reducing the parking by 11 spaces, which they need to do to place the addition at the north end, they have 75 spaces, so they are good there. And those spaces do double duty with the stadium to the northeast as well. I did ask them to have three handicap or ADA accessible parking stalls near the building entrance, and so they're adding one in this parking directly to the west. All right, so we get into the findings, and these are the criteria that the commission must find exist in order to approve a conditional use permit. The first is that the proposal's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. This project addresses overcrowding at the school, and so it addresses school policy number one. It also addresses a couple other policies that the applicant has called out in their application materials. The project will not change the local traffic patterns, so it is consistent with the plan's transportation policies. The project proposes to increase the amount of pervious and planted area, and as I mentioned, only remove two trees. It does not conflict with our natural resources in the area, and as far as we can tell. Now, there is a wetlands over here on the east edge of the property at 60 feet at the closest point to the building, and it's further away from the addition, but we do always notify the Department of State Lands, and then they can determine whether they feel that there will be any impact. I don't anticipate that they will. So this project is consistent with the plan's environmental policies. It's conditional use in the R175 Zone, as I mentioned, and so by following this process, it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. Okay, the second criteria is that the site is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use in all yard spaces, walls, and fences, parking, landscaping, and other features. I've already described to you that the net increase is less than 5,000 square feet, and because they're removing a lot of asphalt, it actually decreases the impervious surface on the lot. I mentioned the problem with the lot line, and we will address that with the covenant. The code requires elementary schools to provide the greater of one acre of site area for each 90 pupils, which would be 4.6 acres for the school's 416 students, or one acre for every three classrooms, which would be eight acres. Especially when we combine the two lots with a restrictive lot-line covenant, once again, you know, we more than meet that requirement. In addition to that, we have the new sidewalk, and all those are able to fit within the school property, so criteria two is met. Criteria three is that the site for the proposed use relates to streets and highways adequate in width and degree of improvement to handle the quantity and kind of vehicular traffic that would be generated by the proposed use. The school administration does not anticipate any increase in the number of students because of this addition, and so consequently, there would be no impact on the adjoining streets, and the criteria is met. The fourth criteria, that the proposed use will have minimal adverse impact on adjoining properties and improvements thereon in making the determination the commission shall consider but not be limited to the proposed location of improvements on the site, vehicular egress and ingress, internal circulation, pedestrian access, setbacks, height and bulk of buildings, walls, fences, landscaping, et cetera. The addition is no closer than the existing school building to residential lots to the east and south. The greatest impact might be on the lots that you see in the upper-left corner of the slide here. This is a residential zone, and these are in private ownership. These lots also tend to benefit most from the removal of the temporaries and replacement of a new addition. So I consider this to be a positive. The vehicular circulation and parking areas will remain unchanged except for these parking spaces right here, and they will be lost as we see the addition constructed here. At any rate, this criteria then would be met. The fifth criteria has to do with preservation of historic scenic and cultural attributes. This is not in an area with those designated areas, so this criteria is either not applicable or you can consider it to be met. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission take any testimony and determine whether or not the application complies with the above criteria. If you find that the criteria are met, you may place conditions on them as recommended, and I would ask you to make the necessary findings. The recommended conditions of approval from the site plan are enclosed in your packets as Exhibit A. The conditions are fairly minor in this case, and it just calls out things that need to be addressed as they go through the process. I do mention in the conditions that the parking lots with 51 to 75 spaces must have three ADA accessible parking spaces, and their revised site plan shows that. Supplementary regulations include that any utilities, new utilities, be placed underground. They are getting their mechanical service from the existing, for the existing school, so that is probably not going to be an issue. Okay, lighting requires artificial lighting not be designed to shine or create glares in any residential zone, adjacent dwelling unit, or from the public right-of-way. And I didn't change this on this, but I did put it in the final order that the light at the north end that they have proposed needs to direct light downward, and it will be acceptable if it meets the other requirements in the code. Trash receptacles and mechanical equipment must be screened from view. Again, they'll be using the existing, and so that is probably not going to be an issue. Public Works Department has asked for erosion control plans, stormwater plans. The street improvements just include the sidewalks that I've already mentioned. Water utilities must be sufficient, and there is water to the site, but we always need to make sure that it meets the standards for water supply and fire protection if necessary. Sanitary sewer facilities are available to the site already, and the applicant agrees to ensure that it's adequate. The applicant must submit engineering plans and as-construted drawings, and those are all pretty standard requirements. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, questions?
Did I hear you say early, Deborah, that they're going to take out 42 trees or two trees?
Two trees.
Okay.
That makes you feel better?
Yeah. Forty-two.
Yeah. Yeah, just there are a couple trees right up here that you can see on the aerial photo. Is that right?
Those are the...
Oh, these two. Okay, that makes more sense, okay. And they're in line with the path.
The conditions of approval, do we have a checklist during construction to make sure that everything is being adhered to? I mean, I hate to bring up the LEED certification of BIMART or something like that, so...
Yes, we do. We send out our inspector, both for planning and, of course, our building inspector. And the planning inspector, sometimes it's Kate, sometimes it's Timothy, sometimes it's me, make sure that all the conditions are addressed before we sign off on the project. With the LEED, you know, with BIMART, it wasn't a site plan issue.
I understand.
And so that's why, yeah, so that's why we didn't catch that one, but...
Yeah, not a problem, but I just thought, you know me, I bring up all kinds of fun stuff.
Well, that's good.
I do have some questions. Okay, I might. Because I'm not well-versed in reading these kind of things. I'm looking at my map, the north corner of the proposed site. Now, how far is that corner of the new building going to be from that sidewalk that exists? I'm assuming is the one at the upper parking lot there? Seeing, I'm trying to figure out the distance between the building and that existing sidewalk on my map.
To the north here?
Yes.
Okay, well, what happened...
See, it's a set of steps.
Okay, they actually are moving the steps over, and they can point that out on the plan, but the addition crosses this green line, which is the tax lot line, and it's just by a small corner, but it actually crosses that line, so it's about right in here.
Okay.
And it wraps around a little bit on the front of the building.
Will that be the only access to these new rooms, with the exception of going through the main entrance?
Yes.
So this will not be handicap accessible, this end of the building?
The, let's see, if I can show you...
Absolutely.
Oh, did I show you the drawings here? Okay, right, here's the north entrance, and...
There is up against some steps, is all I see, leading to an existing concrete sidewalk.
Okay, let's go back to the site plan, and maybe you can see on here. Right, here are steps. If people are parking here, they would have to come around to the concrete sidewalk in the front of the building.
Potentially, they would have to go all the way up to the front of the building and then come back around just to access that classroom?
They would have to come through the building to access the classroom, I believe, unless I don't think they can get...
It'll be ramp, it'll be steps.
I believe so. You can ask the applicant when they come up. So that's why we've got the ADA stalls are up here rather than down there.
Yeah, one. But again, that's still not accessible.
We have one here, one here, and two that are off the screen.
Right, but still, this end of the building with the steps is not accessible at all. You have to go in through the main entrance to get two of those.
I believe so.
And have provisions been made for evacuation?
I'll have to ask the applicant when they come up. They'll have to ask the applicant.
Because you're going into a four-foot drop, as far as I can see, downstairs with no other access, mean of egress. And I, I'm just, I'm a layman at this, I'm not...
Well, I think that's a, that's a fair question, and I hope our applicants will be able to answer that.
Okay. Patrick, go ahead, are you done?
No.
Don't worry, I've got more of it.
I can share.
The, can you enlighten us as to the process for review of this site plan of the project by the public safety agencies, police and fire?
All right, we had our site plan review a couple of weeks ago. Kate sends out notice to all the involved agencies, and they have an opportunity to comment prior to the site plan review, they have an opportunity to attend the site plan review. The police chief came to the site plan review, and he was the only one other than myself and the city, one of the city engineers.
I, I raised the question because in, speaking with the fire marshal last night, he indicated that there was going to be a subsequent meeting on the issues from North Lincoln's perspective, and in looking over the site plan, I see existing hydrants, but I don't see any additional hydrants being called out for with the doubling of the space, and I don't see any additional access to the side of the building, to the east side of the building, keeping in mind the recent issues that occurred at the high school, Woodburn High School. I'd like to, I would like to understand and be assured that the, the safety issues, you know, in the event of an emergency, are being incorporated into this review, and that the apparent lack of attendance, or, you know, perhaps due to scheduling conflicts, is not taken as a sign that there may not be an interest in it.
Well, of course, when our building inspector does his review of the plans, he makes sure that it meets building code, which addresses the fire safety issues, and so, you know, it's not what I consider to be part of the conditional use permit process, but it certainly is covered in the building permit process.
I, I would not leap to that same conclusion instantly, because if, for example, east side of the building required additional access for fire or emergency egress, that might change the site plan, and it might change some of your findings.
Well, that's true, and if it was a substantial change, it would have to come back through the, through the process.
On, did you have anything?
I did, again, forgive me for my layman's perspective here, you're, you're going to be joining roof lines, it's gonna be the same type roof, same pitch, everything's gonna be, I think we're looking at a flat.
Okay, this is the north elevation.
Okay.
I, I didn't get to that before. The west elevation, this is the street, from the street view. South elevation, of course, the, the blank part in here is the existing building.
Okay.
And let's see here, I gotta go back for the east elevation.
One concern I have, this occurred at a school in my district in Portland, they added and added, added fire and a thing in between. These additions basically created a chimney for a fire, the, a vertical chimney, or horizontal chimney, rather, there, and I'm just curious, I just wanna make sure, do we have protections in place that say, okay, we're gonna put this, join this, but we're not just making a longer tunnel base? Follow, question clear?
You're looking for fire blocking?
Yes.
Again, I think those kinds of details will be addressed by the building inspector, but I, I cannot respond to them.
Okay.
Perhaps the applicant can, answer those for you.
All right.
Okay, any commissioners, any other questions?
Just have some.
Yes.
We have seventy parking spots available after the meeting is completed.
Yes.
Only two of those are gonna be designated handicap?
Three.
Three.
Mm-hmm.
Is, does that put in the parameters?
Yes, it does. It, the building code and the ADA break it down into a category of fifty-one to seventy-five spaces, three ADA parking spaces are required, one has to be banned accessible.
Do they have to be within certain distance of a door or wheelchairs?
Yes, they, well, I think they have to be as close as possible, is what, what it, it says, and again, you know, it will be reviewed at the building permit level.
So none of, none of, none of the parking spaces are gonna be utilized by students, then? This is just a bleak part of the elementary school?
Well, it's elementary, and so, you know, the parents are dropping off and picking up. There are, there are some on-street spaces, there are the spaces here to the east of the school, and then the larger parking lot to the, to the north.
The high school.
Mm-hmm. Well, here, let's see. Okay, this, this area is parking, it serves the stadium, but then there is an additional parking area over here that serves the high school, on both sides of the high school. So this is most convenient to, and, and basically serves the elementary school and the stadium when there's something going on there, which would not be at the same time.
The field, then, that's through the I-S-A, is that utilized?
This is where they just constructed the new ball diamond, and they will be paving some parking area down here for that, and they also expect that they will utilize this parking when, when they have ballgames going on, which generally is not when the elementary school is, is in session.
Okay, thank you very much, Deborah.
Yes.
Okay, the applicant may, may now testify. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Dawn Pavitt, Pavitt Land Use Consulting, P.O. Box Five in Newport, nine-seven-three-six-five. Thank you for having us here tonight. We've worked very closely with your Public Works and Planning and Community Development staff, they've done a great job helping us through the process. As you know, we've been here once before in the last year for Ocean Lake Elementary, which was a bigger remodel, and we're coming back now with another bond measure project for Taft Elementary. I have with me tonight, Mr. Rich Belloni, he's the Director of Support Services, and I think he's going to be able to answer all those detailed questions you had about the drawings and fire safety, he's been to the meetings and such. I will tell you that I am not going to belabor this, I am not gonna go through and do, overdo what Deborah has just done very competently and very well. We believe we've submitted a very detailed application that meets the zoning code and the comprehensive plan for this project, and now I'm just gonna let Rich explain a little bit about the project, and then if you have questions, please let us know.
Thank you, Deborah. I'm Rich Belloni, for the record, Director of Support Services for Lincoln County School District. Deborah did a g...
Name and address also, please.
Oh, uh...
P.O. Box Eleven-Ten.
P.O. Box Eleven-Ten, I don't even know the address of this school, Newport. Thank you.
That's all right.
I think I can answer most of the questions, I don't remember them all, but one of them was on fire, was, and we met with the fire chief, because Doug was off during that period of time, and you were asking about fire hydrants, and how do I get back to the site plan?
I don't know how to drive on it, that's, I was actually thinking of asking Deborah to stay so she could show us that. You just left-click each time?
Yeah, you can just use that.
Oh, okay.
Or these arrow.
Okay, thank, thank you. So there's a fire hydrant located right out in this area, right here, for the school, and the fire chief has requested that it be moved out here to this corner. There's two different water lines on the street, and there's actually another fire hydrant over here on this side of the street, but in his words, they don't like to lay fire line across the street, because then they have to go clear around to get back. So they'd like that fire hydrant moved to this, this corner, we have no objection to that. His covenant was that, that's what he thought, but Doug is a fire marshal, and he'd really like to have Doug Kerr there for that, and I talked to Doug, and he was, he'd been gone, and he was busy last week, and we have appointment nine forty-five on Thursday morning, and it's kinda where he says it's gonna be, is where it's gonna be.
That's, that's all I wanna hear.
Yeah, and we don't, yeah, we don't care. One of the other questions was, was on ADA access, and let me see if I can find the front of the school here. So the front of the school, the front door is right here, the ADA parking is right here, this is all landscaping out here. In most all cases, we want everybody to come through the front door for security, and, but the, the question is a good question in that, what happens if there is a fire, you can get out of here? There's a sidewalk right here, and out, that will be ADA compliant. We will end up building a little retaining wall, right along this, this dark line you see right here. The site's gonna be excavated quite a bit, soil tests in this area, we did a geological survey of it, the soil in here was fill from when they built that school, so there's a fairly decent-sized area, we'll be hauling the dirt out and putting rock back, and the engineer and the architect and the geologist will, will have to compact it up to ninety-five percent with, with rock, that we've already planned that we need to do. There were some other questions, but I think I, can't remember right now, what, I think most everything everybody asked, I thought I could answer, other than the fire.
More continuation on, on the issue of the fire department looking at it, long as fire marshal buys into it, that was my real concern, that we, we actually had an active process to make sure that those conditions are incorporated into the file.
Yes, and we, in order to get a permit, we have to make Doug happy, and we will do that.
And we've been, we've been working with Doug Kerr on Ocean Lake and Taft and all the different projects that we've been working on up here.
We'd have this right now, exactly, but Doug's been out of town and...
He's been goofing off on vacation.
Well, and then I think he got, had to get trained last week, he said, so, but that's good, you know, and Doug's not unreasonable, he, he wants what's safe. That, there was a good question about the fire, that you just mentioned...
Isn't it east elevation?
Fire blocking through the...
Yeah, so what, this area right here has to be a, this is basically, has to be a separate building for the fire code, so there's a set of fire doors here, so that if there is a fire, these doors close, and then this is a firewall above here, and it was asked about, this is a flat roof, and this will be a peaked roof, so we'll have to, we have to do, I believe, a two-hour firewall on this side to meet code. That's exactly what you're talking about, can't help it, that we have that draft, and it runs all the way through, through the ceiling, and, and the reason this is a peaked roof is that flat roofs leak, and when we did this bond, I told the architects, we're not having any flat roofs, everything's gonna be peaked, and they said, well, it's gonna look really bad. Looked to the school, and I said, okay, I'll, then it's my fault, it looks really bad, but the peaked roof's gonna leak, and the flat ones do eventually, so, that's the reason that it's there, but we did have to address that in fire code in our, on our building plan.
If I could just ask again, because I'm, again, not really clear on reading these things, on the elevation map, I see steps, and then I do see the line for the, I guess a walkway, like you were showing, but if you go back to that...
That one on the road?
Here, yeah, those...
But then on the next one, gone.
Yeah, they, there'll be a set of, I think there's a set of steps here, but I think the location here's not, not drawn very well, it needs to be over, because we have to have that access here that you're seeing?
Right.
To be able to get out, so the steps should be depicted probably a little bit to the right.
Plus, remember, you said he's digging down?
Right. Got a four-foot drop there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're moving, what says?
Yes.
Those exist. That follows that last one.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that, maybe they've got that, so these are existing, I think's what they're saying, and they're coming out.
Right, my concern, and I'm, I'm sure the fire marshal's gone over this, but, you know, we all panic situations, if there's a fire, and someone's gotta get out of that end quickly, they have to then run alongside the building that's burning to get away from the fire.
There are act...
If they're in a wheelchair.
Yeah, there are actually, because these rooms are so big, there's actually doors...
Will have doors.
There are actually doors, yeah, there are actually doors coming out of them. Normally, there wouldn't be, but because the, anything over a thousand square feet have a set of doors.
Right.
And so, these doors will be panicked hardware, but they're not, they're gonna be doors for exiting and not for, for the safety of the school, we don't like people coming in and out the side doors, so the doors, when you're outside, won't even have a handle on them, they'll just have a blank plate.
I, I keep harving on this, because I spent a couple of years working in, in the special needs section, Portland Public Schools, and we had to go through fire drills, and we had five wheelchair-bound students, and I know what it's like trying to shove a wheelchair across wet grass, doesn't work, and so my concern is, okay, even if you add a separate door there, are we going out in the middle of a rainstorm into mud?
Well, they had, the architect, Wally Gressel, is, is in a wheelchair, and on, on crutches, and he is, he is the lead architect on the project, and believe me, we always meet ADA, because he has to get in and get out of the building himself, he really, he really sees it. And so there is another exit right here, that comes out of the school, at this end, this hallway here, and this is, and there'll, there'll be, there'll be a walkway, like I said, coming this way, the other side is gonna be grass, but we, when, we had to have a, a concrete exit here, so I'm not positive if there's a, a way there, but we will make it handicap accessible, we, we don't have any choice, and we wouldn't have it any other way.
Stuff I've been through, that I doubt.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, and in, in the old days, it wasn't paid very much attention to you.
No.
The code now really addresses ADA.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for any additional public testimony, and you're here for a presentation, not for testimony, okay. Does any, no, no member of the audience, are there any members of the audience who wish to speak against the proposal? Is there any person who has any neutral testimony? Is there any testimony from representatives of public agencies? The applicant, there's no rebuttal? Okay. If there is no further testimony, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Okay, commissioners, where are we at? Does anybody have any questions? Anything, any discussion needed, or can we have a motion to approve the conditional use permit and adopt the findings of staff?
Just a quick question, as I'm new to the process, do we have anything to do?
No, I think that's all.
Her view?
The removal requires a demolition permit if it's handled through our office.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion approving the conditional use permit?
I'll make a motion that we can, we approve the conditional use permit, two thousand twelve dash oh-one.
And adopt the findings of staff?
And adopt, yeah, with adoption of the findings of staff.
Okay, may we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Kate.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Fearborn?
Yes. Okay, it's been approved, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I suggest at this point, since you've approved that, that you take a few minutes and look at the final order that Kate will distribute, and while you're doing that, we can get set up for the next event.
Okay. Did we want to do the final order now?
May as well.
May as well. Okay, well, he's still setting up. Okay, commissioners, are there any questions or changes or additions to the final order that you've just been distributed? If not, may we have a, a motion to approve final order number 2012-404? A conditional use permit for the Taft Elementary School addition.
I'll make a motion to approve final order number 2012-04.
Okay, do we have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Do we need a roll call on that?
Sure. Okay. Williams?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Fearborn?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, are we ready for the next agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he was still, yeah, I'm just sitting here looking around.
Waiting for you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm not fast, anyway. Okay, no old business, now we have some new business. We have a, a guest speaker for planning for tsunamis. Ian Ma- Madden?
Maiden.
Maiden, Chief Scientist, Department of Geology and Mineral Industries. Is that a state?
Yes, we're the State Geological Survey.
What, the state of Oregon?
That's correct.
Okay.
Again, is it possible that we condemn these? Because it's really tough.
Oh, yes.
One other question? Is this presentation being broadcast?
Okay, if we're set, I'll be happy to launch into this. What I wanted to talk to you about this evening was sort of the status of what we know about earthquake hazards and tsunami hazards on the Oregon coast. We've made great leaps in our understanding over the last 10 or 15 years. A huge amount of attention's been focused on the issue since the Japan earthquake of the last year. And that earthquake actually found us already in the midst of a long-term aggressive program to try to really understand the tsunami hazard and to try to come to grips with it. Because that's probably the biggest risk that we face here on the Oregon coast. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the consequences of the Japan earthquake, some of the things that made it so disastrous and damaging. And then talk to you about what we think our next earthquake is going to look like. And what we know about the timing of that earthquake. And then talk to you about, in detail, about how we're going about mapping the next tsunami and the kind of information that we'll be able to provide to you in a, in a few months, actually. And then perhaps just some thoughts about how some of these problems could be addressed, particularly through planning. So, I'd like this to be informal. If you have questions as we go along, please interrupt me so we don't get behind. And I'll try to keep, keep it in layman's terms as much as I can. Come on, there we go. Okay, so, this is just sort of a summary of the, you know, the numbers of the Tohoku earthquake of last year. 16,000 dead, 4,000 missing, so 20,000 dead. 92% of the deaths were from tsunami. This was a, really a tsunami event, not an earthquake event. 300,000 homes completely destroyed, again, mostly tsunami, 600,000 homes damaged. And the thing that people kind of missed out on as you watched the television coverage, which was appalling, was that most of what you were seeing was the tsunami impact. And in fact, people that went and visited shortly after said that it was eerie to walk around outside of the tsunami inundation zone because it looked like virtually nothing had happened. That there was very little shaking damage, structural damage to buildings and bridges and that so, sort of thing from the, the actual shaking of the earthquake. And so, this is sort of a different paradigm when we look at, you know, the hazards associated with the, the event. Whoop, that's the wrong way. There we go. So, here's some of the things that made that tsunami so unique. Japanese have known about tsunami risk on their coast for centuries. Tsunami is their word. They have planned for these things. They engineered coastal defenses for them. But this one caught them by surprise because it was two times as big as they thought was possible. And part of that's a little bit of scientific myopia, if you will. But the bottom line is, they got the worst-case scenario event when they were planning for the medium event. And they had, you know, the wave heights typically up to 15 meters, in some cases 20 meters, so 50, 60 feet above sea level. And they had planned for perhaps 20 or 25 feet. This is my first time with the iPad presentation, so I haven't figured out which way to go yet. Okay, so, one of the other things that people kind of lose sight of is that tsunami is not, it's not a flood. It's not just the water comes up and things get wet. The tsunami comes in at very high speed and it picks up everything in its way. And if you saw some of this spectacular video, it's actually not water. It's a, what we call a debris glacier, a mass of houses and trees and earth and buses and boats and what have you that are moving as this sort of solid mass. And that's an extremely destructive thing. There's really very few structures that were capable of resisting this impact. In places where they built tsunami seawalls like this, they were simply overtopped. And then, once they were overtopped, they were generally torn to pieces and spread inland. In places where they built tsunami, or they had structures that had been designated as tsunami evacuation structures, many of them got completely destroyed or overtopped. In this particular instance, in this small town of Minimis San Riku, they had a third of their evacuation buildings destroyed. And you can see, here's a steel frame building. It didn't fall out over, but it was completely stripped, gutted and, and overtopped. So, the engineered facilities essentially failed in almost all instances, yes.
Can you give me an idea how high that wall is?
That's a three, oh, the, the wall here, I think these were, well, you can see, those are minivans going over the top there. So, I'm guessing that that's about a 20-foot seawall. And in some of these villages, I mean, they had gigantic steel gates that they closed in time for the, you know, the tsunami to come in to close off the harbor. And then just went right over the top. So, you know, that's the problem, this is, you know, it's the same problem in Katrina where you had a seawall, but all it's got to do is be six inches too low. And once the water goes over the top, that's kind of the end of, end of the story. And so, you know, one of the lessons that we learned from this is that, within the areas that were inundated by the tsunami, the damage was essentially total. There were very few structures that survived in a usable fashion. You know, in these photographs, you can see a handful of brick or steel structures that remained. You can see the piers from a highway bridge that remained, but everything else has basically been removed. And so, the lesson from this is that, if you want to avoid tsunami damage, don't put anything you care about in the tsunami inundation zone. That's a very simple approach. And, and it's also, it's a warning about thinking that we can engineer our way around this problem. That, you know, Japanese are masters at this. They put tons of money into it. They put a lot of concrete and steel out there and very little of it served its purpose. So, what does that mean for us? Well, these two maps here show Pacific Northwest and Northeastern Japan. And the red line there on each of those maps is the subduction zone, which is one of these giant globe-spanning faults that are part of the plate tectonic network of, of the planet. And the big green areas are the actual fault portion that failed in Japan on the one side and that we believe will fail in the next earthquake off of Oregon and Washington. And the point here is that we are a mirror image of Japan. We have the exact same setting, geologic setting, the exact same processes that are going on. And so, what that really means is that the earthquake that they experienced is, that's our future. And so, that gives us an opportunity to really kind of understand what's going on. And now, we've got perhaps a lifetime to plan and to try not to make the mistakes that the Japanese made. So, to begin with, we know that this earthquake will produce a very long period of very strong shaking. So, this is one of the characteristics of these great subduction zone earthquakes is the fault is very long. It's 1,000 miles long. It takes a long time for it to tear and move. And that means that it's generating shaking for a long period of time. And so, it's quite common to see strong shaking in these earthquakes that last between two minutes and five minutes. And for comparison, the 1989 World Series earthquake that happened in the San Francisco Bay Area shook hard for about 30 seconds. So, this is a completely different kind of, of an event. And so, this map kind of shows the strength of shaking that the Japanese experienced and then a computer model of what we might expect from our own magnitude nine earthquake in the future. And you can see, we're pretty much looking at the same kind of pattern. Very, very strong shaking along the coast and then substantially diminished inward. But certainly very damaging shaking along the coast. And unfortunately, this is one of these instances where the coast gets more than its share of, of the hazard. One of the other things that we know is that along with this strong shaking, we will see widespread ground failure. So, there's two kinds of ground failure that we worry about. One is liquefaction. So, if you have loose sand or silt, for instance, along the river or in the bay and you shake it really hard, it essentially turns into soup and it loses its ability to support structures. It flows on very, very low slopes and anything that you've built on it will be substantially damaged or not, if not destroyed. And in fact, for most earthquakes, if you see really spectacular damage, bridges knocked over, buildings knocked over, it's almost always a liquefaction failure that's caused that. So, the map on the left shows the areas around Lincoln City here that have high, low, medium modeled liquefaction hazards. So, we've done a series of these models for a statewide planning exercise that we're doing. And so, you can see, there's a lot of areas there of medium to high liquefaction, which is, that's, that means it's almost certainly going to be some liquefaction damage in that area. The other thing that comes along with earthquakes is landslides. And, you know, we have plenty of landslides on our own in Western Oregon just when it rains. And if you add in strong shaking to that, you get lots and lots of landslides. And because of the topography and because of the geology here and because of the climate, we expect to see very, very large areas of the coast experience virtually anything that's even remotely steep is likely going to have lots and lots of landslides. So, although we're going to have a lot of shaking and that may damage a lot of buildings, what's really going to disrupt our transportation system, our water systems, our power systems is these widespread ground failures, liquefaction and landsliding. Because you can build a building really strong, and if it's on good solid ground, it'll survive. It's really hard to build a structure that will tolerate having the land underneath it move 20 feet. And so, these ground deformation, ground motion problems are going to be a huge source of damage. And then here's sort of the final picture. This is kind of looking at the, sort of the total package of damage where we've added in the strength of the shaking, we've added in the landslides, the liquefactions, the tsunamis. And we've tried to put this in terms that are related, that are related to effects on people and objects. Because normally, when we describe earthquake effects, we use all sorts of numbers and stuff that nobody understands. So, the, the colors here, again, for Lincoln City areas start with, oh, and I'm sorry, I may not have made this clear, but, so, there's the bay and here's the Devil's Lake, just for orientation, if that wasn't clear. The, the least damage that you see in this image is moderate to heavy, which means partial collapse of poorly constructed buildings like masonry buildings, houses beginning to shift off their foundations. And then we go up to heavy, which is serious damage to older buildings and poorly constructed buildings, lots of collapse, houses knocked off their foundations. And then, in the tsunami inundation zone, we have essentially everything destroyed other than things that are very, very substantial. So, we know that we're going to have this very strong shaking. And there's one, one good point about this is that the shaking will be so amazing and so unusual that there will be no doubt that this is the subduction zone earthquake. And so, we have this built-in warning that it's time to get away from the tsunami. Because one thing we know from Japan and from all the computer simulations we've done is that you have a very short period of time, 15 minutes to half an hour before the tsunami arrives. So, you get that warning, that natural warning from the earthquake shaking, and it's time to pack up and go. So, this sounds really scary, and it is. It's, you know, as I say, an unprecedented disaster. But we have to temper that with an understanding of the likelihood, okay? So, this is, this event, we know is possible. We know it's happened in the past, but it's not imminent. It's not just about to happen, even though we're very tuned into this from the Japan earthquake. So, let me talk a little bit about what we know about how often these earthquakes occur. So, we have a very good idea of what the history of these great earthquakes in Oregon has been. And the geology tells us that. The story is written in the mud. The earthquakes cause large-scale changes- The earthquakes cause large-scale changes in land level along the coast that will cause forests to drop into the tidal zone and die and be buried, like this one up here in southwest Washington. Or marsh, marsh surfaces, like this lower picture on the right, that have that topsoil layer, will be dropped into the inner tidal zone and buried by mud, oftentimes with sand deposited by the tsunami on top of them. So we see this evidence along the coast, in marshes, of this abrupt land level change. The land drops six feet in 30 seconds permanently. And then, the other thing that happens is that offshore, that strong shaking produces submarine landslides. And those submarine landslides cause a current of mud to essentially flow down all the submarine canyons out onto the ocean floor, and they come to rest producing a layer of sediment called a turbidite. And so, on the lower, left-hand side there, you see a seafloor core where they've driven a pipe into the ocean mud and pulled it out, cut it in half, and each of those layers that you see there is a turbidite. Each one of those was caused by an earthquake. So we can go out and collect information from these marshes, from these seafloor cores, from these buried forests, and we can piece together a history of the earthquakes on the, off the Oregon coast. And when we do that, we find that there are several distinct sizes of earthquake. It's not always the same event, and which is kind of what we expect. Earth processes are very random and variable, and so you never get the same earthquake twice. You never get the same storm twice. So what we know is that we have big earthquakes that cover the entire subduction zone from British Columbia to northern California. And the majority of the events, you see there on the slide labeled A, have been these very, very large events. These are magnitude-nine or larger earthquakes. And then, there's a few of them that have only gone as far north as the mouth of the Columbia, and they're perhaps magnitude-8.9, which is still a huge earthquake. And then, there's a bunch that only went perhaps as far north as Newport. And then, there's a whole bunch more that only affected the south coast from about Coos Bay South. So when we talk about the effects of these earthquakes, there's actually quite a few different possibilities, and we cannot predict which of these we're going to get on the next event. And so, that complicates the issue when it comes to talking about tsunamis, and you'll see that in a moment. So if we take everything we know about these earthquakes and we put them on a timeline, this is what it looks like. So the little red bars there on this timeline, which goes back 10,000 years, are the earthquakes that we know about. We've got 40 of them in the last 10,000 years. And the big bars represent the big earthquakes, and the small bars represent the small earthquakes. And if you add it all up, we know that we've had 19 of these giant magnitude-nine earthquakes in 10,000 years. 10 in the 8.5 to 8.8 range, and then we think, but we're not real sure because they're small and hard to study, another 10 of the much smaller events like magnitude-8.1 or 8.2 that have only affected the south coast. So if we try to do the calculations on these and calculate the probabilities, what you come up with is that the chance of one of these giant earthquakes, magnitude-nine, occurring in the next 50 years is about 10%, which is equivalent to saying it's a 90% chance that it won't happen in the next 50 years. And so, that's kind of one of the points of good news here, is that it really isn't an event that's imminent, it's something that we have time to plan for. When you get down to the south coast, though, the smaller events are twice as likely, and so now we're looking at a 37% chance of one of those happening in the next 50 years. So for communities from Coos Bay, south California border, face a much more serious hazard in terms of the frequency there. It's been 300 years since the last one of these events. The last one was in 1700. And so, if the average time between them is about 500 years, that really means, you know, likely that we've got quite a bit of time, likely we have generations to get ready. But we have to make good use of that time, because the consequences of not being ready are what you saw in Japan. So let's talk about the tsunami. This is a satellite composite image showing the wave height from the Japan tsunami as it spread out across the Pacific Ocean. And you see, there's a little, there's a little tendril pointing right there at Crescent City and Port Orford in south, southern Oregon, and that's actually where we recorded the greatest tsunami waves during that event. And this is sort of, you know, illustrates how complicated the travel of the tsunami across the ocean is. But what we're really trying to get at is, where's that inundation zone going to be? Next magnitude-nine earthquake, what kind of, you know, how high is the water going to come? That's the important thing to answer. And so, we have to understand a little bit about how the tsunami's created. Basically, what happens is that we have a giant fault offshore that comes to the, comes to the surface of the earth at the bottom of the ocean out in 5,000 feet of water. And that fault is trying to push all of the North American continent up and over the ocean floor. And it resists for hundreds of years, until eventually, in one afternoon, it just decides to get up and lurch 50 feet to the east. And when it does that, the seafloor at the leading edge of this fault buckles underneath the ocean, and you get a bulge of land essentially, or bulge of seafloor that rises up perhaps 20, 30, 40 feet beneath this 5,000 feet of water. And so, you can imagine, if you displace the seafloor upward, that water has, that's above it, has to go someplace. And so, you basically, you transfer that bulge in the, in the seafloor all the way to the surface of the water, and you make a big bulge on the water's surface. So it's maybe 20 feet high, it's maybe 10 miles wide, and it's 1,000 miles long. So you've moved this huge amount of water up. And then, when it settles down, it produces a wave that, of course, travels and propagates. So the, and once it starts traveling, if it's in the ocean, open ocean, it travels at 500 or 600 miles an hour, and is actually very small. When it goes by a ship, it's six inches, and traveling at jetliner speeds. When it comes to shore, it starts to pile up and slow down and build up and get bigger and bigger. So when we go through and try to make a model of how these things, or where these are going to go, we have to understand several different factors. And one thing to keep in mind is, you know, people talk about a tidal wave, which is a completely different thing, and the tsunami is not a really, it's not a wave in the, in the sense that you're used to when you go down to the beach and watch big storm waves coming in. They have a very short period, they rise up and fall down in a few seconds, and the tsunami rises for such a long period of time, 10 or 20 minutes, that essentially, it just looks like a very fast, very high tide coming in. And then, eventually, it turns around and goes back out, and then the tide essentially is low again. So you have, what you'll have is a huge tidal cycle that, instead of being six hours apart, is 15 minutes apart. And so, that's very distinct from a more normal wave. And that gives the tsunami a whole bunch of opportunity to flow inland, because it's high for a very long period of time. So we need to know several things when we go to make these models. First off, we need to know, what is, what does that bulge on the seafloor look like? And that's something we don't actually know very well, so we have to produce computer models based on our best geologic understanding to describe the shape of that bulge. Then, once we've generated the wave at the surface, we have to have it travel across the ocean and come up on shore. That's the easy part of this. All it requires is supercomputers to run the math, but we understand the math and the physics of moving water very, very well. And then, when we get that wave to the shore, then we have to understand, what does the shoreline look like when the water gets there? How high is it, and what is its shape? Because those impact where it flows in. So for instance, if you come in, if the wave is 50 feet at the, at the surf line, and it comes up against a bluff, it may rise 80 feet up the bluff. If it comes into an open valley, it may never get more than 20 feet high, because it can spread out into the valley. So we have to know that topography. And that, we've been able to establish because of the new LiDAR data that we've collected here over the last couple of years. It gives us a very accurate map of the topography and the shape of the landscape. So we've got all these pieces put together, and that allows us then basically to simulate an earthquake and run the tsunami that it produces and see where it goes. So we've got the system put together, but remember, I said there's several different sizes of earthquake that are possible? So what we've done is we've picked five different sizes to run all five of those, so that we have some understanding of the difference between those very small ones and the very large ones. And this is where it's going to get complicated, because people like you are going to have to make a decision about which one of these we care about. So the thing to notice here is, we've got small, medium, large, extra-large, extra, extra-large. We've tried to keep, keep the names simple. The small and medium are the vast majority of them. And you can see how many, by the little bars there are, that's dividing those 19 earthquakes. These colored bars are those 19 giant earthquakes, showing how large they were. So we only had one extra, extra-large. We only had one extra-large. We only had two of those large events. So they're very rare, but they're a whole bunch more consequential. So that's, that's where a judgment has to be made about risk. So what we've done then is, we've done this modeling so far for the south coast and for Tillamook County. We take those computer-generated wave elevations on the shoreline, and we produce a series of maps that make it possible for people to see where these various sizes of earthquake, the five, small, medium, large, extra-large, extra, extra-large events, where they will come to. We make a lot of what we call conservative assumptions, yeah?
The earthquake and the tsunami in Japan, how, how is that rated on your chart? Is that small, medium, large?
It would have been a medium or a large.
Okay, thank you.
So the, we mix several, what we call conservative assumptions. In other words, worst case. So we always assume that this happens at high tide. We assume that the land is going to drop five or six feet as a result of that earthquake action, so that adds to the, the depth of the wave. And, and then, we're also able, as we go on, to calculate actually how deep the water will be at any place and how rapidly it'll be moving. And I'll show you that in a minute and why that's important. We also do two, what we call distant earthquake, or distant tsunami scenarios. So these are events that would have started in Alaska, or Japan perhaps, and traveled all the way across the Pacific Ocean. And they're different in that they are much smaller, and we have hours and hours and hours of warning. And although they're more frequent, they're quite a bit smaller. But it still is important to know, if for no other reason than crowd management, you know, where these things are likely to go, because of course, if you have 12 hours' worth of notice, then everybody's going to go down and try to get in the way of, in the way of the wave. And so, those are the things that we depict on what we call the inundation maps. Then we produce an evacuation brochure. The evacuation brochure basically is a map that says, this is where you have to go to be safe. And because we want to be absolutely sure that that evacuation map tells you where you're safe, we use the worst case, so this extra, extra-large event. Even though it's very, very rare, it's so much worse than all the rest that we feel that, you know, that has to be the line that you have to get past if you want to be safe. So I'll show you some examples of that in a moment. So here's an example of one of the inundation maps for Coos Bay. And so, you can see the different colors correspond here to the different size, the small, medium, large, extra-large, extra, extra-large. And the thing to notice is, the difference when you go from small and medium, those purple tones, into the large, extra-large, extra, extra-large is dramatic. So with the small and medium, Charleston is the only thing that's at risk here. It's right down at sea level practically. And people that are in Barview, which is kind of up on a bluff with a bit of a sea cliff there, are completely uninvolved. And then, when you go to the extra-large or the extra, extra-large, suddenly, that tsunami goes another mile inland, and the number of houses that are impacted goes from 50 to 500. And so, this is, this is the real quandary. The extra, extra-large and the extra-large are so much worse, and yet, they're very, very rare, but we know that they've happened. And so, we have to make a judgment about what we actually plan for. Now, we've sort of made the judgment that, for evacuation purposes, we plan for this, so that you'll be sure that you're safe. But if we were talking about, where is it appropriate to site a condo complex, or a school, or a commercial building? Does it really make sense to require them to be completely outside of the absolute worst-case scenario and, and basically say that there's this mile stretch of coast that you shouldn't build in because it might get wet? Or do you make a judgment that it's a, it's a calculated risk that it's so unlikely that it's, it's okay to build a particular kind of facility in that area? This is a cross-section through that same area, just kind of showing, you know, illustrating again, the dramatic difference in depth. So here's the elevation that the wave reaches over here, in feet above sea level. So we're looking down here at 30 feet for the small and the medium, and 80 feet for the extra, extra-large. So it's dramatically worse. But in Sumatra in 2006, they got up to 90 feet. And in Japan, they got up into perhaps the 70-foot range. So this is believable and possible. The maps that we produce also include information about the water levels and the changes in water level through time. So we pick several places within the map, you know, for instance, at the mouth of the harbor, at a bridge, that sort of thing, and we show what the, what the water level would do, would do over time if you were standing there watching it go up and down and in and out. And so, again, this is one of the things to keep in mind, is that it's not just one wave, it's a whole bunch of waves. And in this case, the first one's the biggest, but that's not always the case. Sometimes the first one is not, sometimes, you know, it's the second or third one that's the biggest, sometimes the first one is down instead of up. But in this particular case, the first one's the biggest, and then you, and then it cycles. And so, what you're seeing is dramatic changes in water level. Here's a 40-foot change in water level that's taking place in 10 or 12 minutes. And so, as you can imagine, as the water surges up and down, and up and down, it's got to flow really quickly in order to make that change. And so, this is where you get that tremendous destructive power, is with the velocity of the water. And so, we also do make computer models of the flow velocity at particular areas. And so, over here, I'll show you the flow velocity in meters per second, and I understand that, that nobody has any connection with meters per second. But to put this in perspective, waist-deep water at 1.15 meters per second, so that's anything outside of this range, waist-deep water will knock an adult over. And ankle-deep water at 3 meters per second, which is in, anything outside of that range, will knock you over. And so, you can imagine the, the impact on a building when the water is going 10 meters per second. That's like 30 miles an hour, and that's almost unhurt, rivers never flow that fast. So this flow velocity is a really big problem and a big part of the, of the damaging effects. The other thing that we do with these maps is we go through and we make an inventory of all the buildings in the community, and we basically just do a simple exercise that says, how many buildings of a particular use are in each of these inundation zones? To give you some kind of a quantitative sense for what's at risk in the community, yeah?
So what was the speed of the water on the tsunami?
The, the, there were some instances where it was clocked at 40 kilometers an hour, which is 24 miles an hour. And, you know, again, a, a big river in flood might do four. And then, this is just an example of the distant tsunami. This is that same area, and so you can see, it's, again, Charleston gets it, but this is a much, much smaller event, but one that has happened in our lifetimes in 1964. So it's important to understand that as well. Then this is what the evacuation brochures that come out of that look like. And so, we're making these for the entire coast, every community, every stretch in between. They're all totally standardized. We show you the distant tsunami inundation or evacuation zone in orange, so that's, if it's coming from Alaska, you've got to get out of that. And if it's coming from the local event, you've got to get out of the yellow and into the green. Fairly, fairly simple. Green is good, yellow and orange are bad. And then, the other thing that goes into this is that we spend a lot of time with the local community as we're developing the tsunami evacuation map, to get information from them about things like roads, bridges, places, assembly areas, schools, assets that the community cares about, so that... community cares about so that when we put these little As here that are assembly areas on there, that's where you're supposed to go and congregate and wait for the all-clear, we've talked with the city planners, we've talked with the fire people, we've talked with the EMS people and the police and gotten that local information so that we are sure that, you know, it actually makes sense. Nothing more embarrassing than putting together one of these maps and nobody went out and checked and, you know, the Mormon church is gone and it's not an assembly area anymore. And so we will be, when we come to doing this community, we'll be looking for that kind of input from your local folks. So we're in the process of doing the calculations for Lincoln County now, so I don't have any results to show you. What I can show you is the difference between the old tsunami inundation maps that we made 15 or 20 years ago and the new ones in a couple of other communities so you can get a sense for what the changes are. So here's an example comparing Banden, the old map, and the new map. And the bottom line is the new map shows a much, much larger area at risk. If we look at another community, in this case, Kuz Bay, again, you can see a really dramatic difference. The old map had none of this area up here in Barview included, didn't go anywhere near as far up here. So the trend is that the new models are pushing the inundation zones much further inland, much higher, and moving that evacuation zone up the hill. And I'm not, I don't know for a fact that that's going to happen here, but that seems to be the trend everywhere else we look. And so this is your current evacuation map. And, you know, you could probably expect to see these lines creep inland substantially. And again, because Lincoln City is kind of up on a bluff a lot of the way, that the real question is, does it ever get high enough to get over the top of that bluff? Because once it gets over the top of the bluff, then it can go quite a ways. And so that's why it's really difficult to predict where the new models are going to be. But bottom line is you are on our schedule to have these maps in September, October of this year. And so right now, it looks like we'll be able to maintain that schedule and we'll have the maps complete. So that means that sometime between, sometime in the summer, we'll be coming and talking to people about getting that local information for the evacuation maps. This is what it looks like right now if we take what we call the Senate Bill 379 line, which is a regulatory tsunami line that was passed in 1995, and we overlay it on a map of Lincoln City. This Senate Bill 379 line is very close to our medium tsunami everywhere that we've modeled it. So that's kind of giving you a sense for how much impact there is. So you can see quite a bit of inundation down here, of structures around the mouth of the lake, and it extends fairly far inland there, of course, way up the salmon estuary and across the spit at Salashan. And again, we expect that the new modeling will go significantly further. And you saw the difference in the other ones between the medium and the extra-large. That's a substantial break. Oh, and here, before we move away from that, I'm going to have to back up here. So as part of this statewide planning process, we're looking at the states, the tsunami hazards along the entire coast. But I went through and just sort of did a little bit of a tally of what was in the hazard zone. So using this Senate Bill 379 line, we simply went through and counted how many, in this case, residential buildings are in the inundation zone. So out of 22,000 residential buildings in all of Lincoln County, there's 3,500 that are in this inundation zone. So you've got 16% of your housing stock at risk. Commercial buildings, you've got 900 out of 3,200, so you've got 28% of your commercial stock at risk from this medium-sized earthquake. So it gives you a sense for what's at risk. And the other thing that's important to look at is that one up there on the right, vacant residential lots in the tsunami inundation zone. So there's still 750 of those. And so this is one of those instances where this is something that planning can do something about. Before we put more structures at risk on those lots, we need to think about how we want to do that and whether we want to do that. So the last part of this whole package is outreach and education. And one of the things that we observe around the globe, tens of thousands of people died in Sumatra from the tsunami because nobody knew what to do. Chile had a great earthquake with a tsunami that killed 80 people because everybody in Chile knew what a big earthquake meant and knew that you had to run for high ground. They had that ingrained, taut response. Japanese as well, you know, although there was a terrible death toll, 20,000, there were half a million people in the inundation zone. And 94% of them made it to safety because they knew to go to safety. So we've been working really hard at trying to do community-based outreach. We put up signs marking the evacuation routes and the evacuation zones. We have staff people from our agency that are working with communities one-on-one, setting up training sessions, setting up evacuation drills. We've just got a big one going in Kuz Bay here shortly, had one in Seaside a while ago, and trying to really create that culture of awareness and understanding. The, this program has been funded now for several years by the National Oceanographic Administration through their tsunami hazard mitigation program. And unfortunately, that funding is starting to diminish. And so we're going to have to make a choice as to whether we complete the tsunami inundation mapping or continue to do a lot more of this outreach. Of course, we want to make that choice, but what we really think is important is understanding where those inundation zones are because it's so consequential where they are. And we'll try to continue that outreach program if we can. And so this, again, once we completed a map, for instance, for Lincoln City or Newport, we would try to follow that up with an education program and actually put somebody here working in the community for six months or a year. So for instance, as I said, we've got this, we had rallies in Kuz Bay back in March. And at the end of this month, we're having an evacuation drill where we've gone literally in the interim, we've gone door-to-door, giving people packets, showing them where, giving them evacuation maps, talking to them about participating in this drill. And we hope to get thousands of people participating in this evacuation drill at the end of the month. And that's the kind of thing that sticks in people's heads and, you know, really, it's like, once you've figured out how you have to evacuate, then you can get on with your life because you kind of know what you need to do in the event of this very rare disaster. We have several other information sources. I have a website called the Oregon Tsunami Clearing House that has all sorts of information, including evacuation brochures. All of the evacuation brochures are available there online. The Senate Bill 379 maps are available there. And there's a link to an interactive website that you can basically type in your address or you can zoom and pan around and it will show you where the inundation zones are. So this is an example, again, for Banden. So you could type in your address, for instance, and it would take you right to that point and show you where the evacuation zone was. We've also developed, of course, mobile phone apps so that when you're out walking around on the beach, you can pull out your phone and find out what the quickest way to the evacuation zone is. And again, it's all part of this effort to, you know, create that kind of constant public awareness. So, you know, again, the things that are reinforced from Japan is that you've got to plan the evacuation in advance. You've got to know where to go. You've got to be ready to go. They have this notion called the go-bag where you, you know, you don't stop to gather up the cat and the family photos. You've got the bag with, you know, your disaster supplies that you should have anyhow for floods or fires or what have you. Someplace located easy so you can grab it. You've got a little bit of food, you've got some water, you've got some first aid supplies, you've got some warm clothes. You need to know to immediately evacuate after the ground stops shaking. You only use a building to evacuate to if there's absolutely nothing else to get to. And there are some places, for instance, southwest Washington, the Long Beach Peninsula, they are miles from high enough ground and they have to come up with some kind of evacuation structure. Got to remember that the waves keep coming. You don't want to go back until somebody's told you it's okay. And then understand that virtually everything in that inundation zone is going to be gone. When we talk and we're working on this, again, the statewide resilience plan, we've been talking with utilities about restoring power. And it actually becomes a non-issue in the coastal communities because they won't need to restore power to neighborhoods that don't exist. And so it actually reduces their challenge at that point. What it also means, however, is that we will have a dramatic refugee situation if we can't get people situated on the coast. So I'm going to just leave you with a last couple of bits of standard earthquake awareness. Make sure that you get prepared before the earthquake. Red Cross always talks about, you know, being ready for 72 hours and being ready for a week. On the coast, you might want to add another week to that because of the problems that we'll have with access, landslides, drawing highways and that sort of thing. People need to be self-sufficient, understand that they've got to be on their own for food and water for a while. Having that family emergency plan so you know how you're going to reunite with your family so that you don't have to worry about that and you can get on with trying to pick up and get back with your life. And then there's a whole bunch of stuff that you can do to secure your home that is inexpensive and really effective. So things like bolting down your water heater, bracing your chimney. And the big one for wood frame houses is bolting them to the foundation. A wood frame house that is bolted to the foundation is pretty much sure to survive the earthquake and be inhabitable. If it is not bolted to the foundation, it may simply slide off two feet and then it is a complete loss and not inhabitable. So that's an easy couple-thousand-dollar fix. During the earthquake, drop cover and hold. That's still what we recommend regardless of anything else you might hear. In most buildings, the thing that's going to get you is not the building, it's all the stuff up here that's going to be falling out of the ceiling and the light fixtures and whatnot. So getting underneath some kind of structure is still the safest way to go. What you don't want to do is get up and run out of the building, even though that's human nature. You know, in 1993, we had the spring break quake in Malala, and many of you may remember that. And we went up the day after that to Malala High School. And the thing that I carry with me to this day is that the entire brick facade above the main entrance to the high school had collapsed and fallen in a pile of bricks about yea so high right outside the main door. It happened on a weekend. If there had been kids in there, they would have been running out of that door and they would have been smashed. And yet, inside the building, no, no risk. So as hard as it is to do, staying inside. And then, again, you know, we just can't say this too many times with the tsunami. We have to be prepared. We have to do the planning. We have to have that go-kit, know the evacuation brochures, and everybody just has to know that you evacuate as soon as the ground stops shaking, go to high ground, and you wait until somebody tells you it's okay to go back. So that's what I've got right now. And it's not actually real warm and fuzzy, but it's something we have to deal with. And understanding what the issues are are really important. And, you know, planning, I think, has a really great potential here because this is an unusual hazard because it is so place-specific, the tsunami hazard. We can tell you exactly where the problem is. And we could, as a society, we could solve that problem by simply moving everything we cared about out of the tsunami inundation zone. That's, of course, totally impractical because that's people's houses, their livelihoods, bridges, highways, whatnot. But we need to be thinking for the next 50 or 100 years of how can we, how can we move things that are really important to our survival and our recovery after an earthquake and tsunami out of that risk zone? You know, my personal feeling is the tsunami inundation zone should be parks and private residential development. Because if people have a way to evacuate, you know, all you're losing is houses. You're not losing buildings, you're not losing business, you're not losing infrastructure. Houses are relatively easy to rebuild. You've got to put something in that, in that area. But these are the kinds of decisions we have to kind of come to grips with over the future and try to steadily reduce our risk by moving those things we care about out of the zone. So at that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
You mentioned, you know, about scrapping, bringing to the foundation.
Mm-hmm.
So you're folding, I guess is what you said. But isn't a scrapping more of an effect?
Well, that's a question that you'd want to ask a contractor. And it probably depends, you know, modern seismic-resistant design in stick-built homes does involve seismic straps in addition to bolting the mudsill down. But oftentimes, it's relatively easy for people to get in, particularly if they have crawl space or something, to get in and get access to that mudsill and just go ahead and, you know, put a hole, a bolt in every six feet or something like that. And that makes a huge difference. Yeah, ideally, you pull the siding off the outside, you put on the seismic straps, you know, every six feet or whatever it is, and then put everything back together. But that becomes more complicated. There's actually several companies in Portland now that just do this as a business, the seismic retrofits. And there's also lots of resources, obviously, online for people that want to do it on their own. But it's, you know, it's, I'd spend $3,000 doing that to my house rather than buy earthquake insurance.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming.
Pardon me?
I really appreciate Ian coming. I think it's really informative.
Very enlightening, yes. I look forward to the study when it comes out and...
We're hearing a lot more from us.
Well, the state, when they come out, are they going to come out with recommendations for, is, how far is the state going with this?
Well, we have no regulatory authority in this regard. And the only regulation related to tsunami is that Senate Bill 379 law. And that simply says that there are certain facilities, critical facilities, that shouldn't be cited there. But if you do cite them there, you have to consult with us. So some consensus is people just send us a letter and that satisfies the law. And if it's a water-dependent facility, then you're exempt. So it doesn't really have a lot of impact. Other than that, all the development regulation would probably be on a county basis. That's not something that the state takes on. And particularly with respect to land use, I mean, this is something that, you know, people haven't even begun to think about. It's not only an issue of how do we try to encourage things out of the tsunami inundation zone. Cannon Beach has an instance where their grade school's in the inundation zone. It got wet in 1964 from Alaska. They know they have to move it. The only site that they've been able to identify as a good place to move the school to that's still close enough that it makes parents happy, it's across the other side of Highway 101, it's a chunk of warehouse and forest land, and they have to get a zoning change before they can move the school. And they went to the OCD and they asked them to, you know, to rule on this. And basically, we're told, well, you know, you're number 301 in a list of 300, and you'll have to wait your turn. So there's a real opportunity, I think, for us to be thoughtful about how we use zoning and land use and planning to try to encourage these, you know, the kinds of changes we need to make.
My question is concerning Highway 101.
Excuse me?
It's concerning Highway 101.
Yeah.
And the rebuilding of that. I mean, that's our way in and out.
Yeah.
And we can all get to a higher piece of dirt, but once we're there, how are we getting out or people getting in to help?
Yeah. So ODOT is...
State issue.
Yeah. ODOT is in the process of completing a seismic performance evaluation of the state highway system. And they've gone through and they've ranked all the highways in terms of their importance. So high five is, you know, tier one, and 101 is a tier one. And a couple of highways out to the coast are also very high priority. And then they've gone through and tried to determine what their risk is so that they can pick one or two that they think they might be able to fix to the point where they'd be able to keep them open or quickly reopen them. But as it stands now, they assume that Highway 101 will be six or eight or 10 segments separated by failed bridges at most bays and that none of the, none of the highways from the Valamet Valley to the coast will be usable afterwards. And so, you know, this is a huge emergency management problem because that means there will be no way virtually to get supplies to the coast other than by helicopter. And frankly, all of the Coast Guard's facilities are in the inundation zone. Every port, dock, mooring facility that you have is probably going to be gone. So, I mean, it's, that's a real issue. And so ODOT is looking to spend the next 20 years fixing a couple of these highways so that they've got some usable transportation system. But as you can, as you can imagine, that's very expensive. And that's going to the legislature and asking for another billion dollars' worth of spending.
I was just, you know, Pat has got me thinking about this now, and I hadn't been thinking about it before. When we talk about evacuation and then airlifts and things like that, is that something we have to start taking into consideration here in planning to say, okay, we've got an area for people to go, now do we have to construct new facilities?
Yeah, you know, and that's, that's probably, that's starting to get into the, you know, the emergency response planning. And FEMA is currently in the process of doing a major Cascadia scenario planning process, a multi-year process, and they've roped in all the county emergency managers and fire, fire folks. And so they're, they're starting to work on that problem and try to address exactly that question. You know, it's not like an earthquake in California where the help comes from just over the hill.
Right.
You know, here, we're going to be looking at having to be self-sufficient on the coast, at least for a couple of weeks. The majority of the population is going to be stuck there for a couple of weeks without any services. And so that's, that's part of the planning that's got to go on.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
We really appreciate your presentation. Okay. Reports and comments. Richard, you...
The only thing I have to report is that last night at the city council meeting, I gave a presentation similar to what we gave here two weeks ago about street vendors and food carts. And the council in general, I think, shared a lot of the concerns that the planning commission had. And the bottom line was they didn't feel like anything needed to happen yet. If, if it appeared that there was an inundation of food carts and so on, that maybe then we could, if it looked like that was happening, then it would be appropriate to address it at that point.
Thank you.
Actually, why don't you?
Deborah, did you have anything?
Yes. We are having a project advisory committee meeting on Monday for our biking and walking and biking plan. It will be here starting at 5:30, and it's, we're expecting to go about a couple hours on that. Primarily, it's for our project advisory committee. It's of about 16 members. Some of you are on it. And, but the public is welcome to come. And generally, in the past, we've always involved whoever is in attendance. We are going to be talking about systems plan. We've, we've talked about various treatments that we propose for making walking and biking more desirable and attractive and safer. And so now we're talking about where exactly those treatments are going to go on city streets and the highway. So I encourage you all to come.
No public to comment on, and next meeting is June 5th at 6 o'clock. And it looks like there's a public hearing and a discussion on parking lot planned, a public hearing on Dutch Brothers.
Is that right, Kate?
That's right. You approved a conditional use permit for the new Dutch Brothers about a year ago, but conditional uses are only good for a year, and they're getting very close to getting their building permit, but they have a few things they need to get wrapped up and, and to avoid having that permit expiring, they do need to come back and ask for an extension.
Okay. Not a big hearing, just an extension.
Just an extension.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, does anybody have anything?
Just a quick question then on the Dutch Brothers issue, because we had a, when I first joined, had the folks from the Cascade Head Project, and there was talk about extending the, maybe that's not very good. Talk about wanting extension, and we granted another year or two to...
Oh, the villagers of Cascade.
Hey, villagers. And we really didn't have here who had any input into it. It was an attorney, just someone from, franchisee going to be here?
I think there will be someone.
Someone who can answer questions.
To explain where they're at in the project and how much longer they think before they break ground and, you know, what's, what's been the delay on it, so.
Someone who could actually answer questions. Okay, great.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? We're adjourned. Thank you.